Item three on the agenda, public hearing, text amendment twelve one, signed regulation revisions. I call on Seth Harris County Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is text amendment twelve dash one, signed regulation revisions to the signed portion of the zoning ordinance. The revisions include updates to the exempt signs section, increased enforcement options for portable signs, and changes to the requirements for off-premise directional signs. Staff did contact adjoining counties and other counties of similar size and compare their sign enforcement procedures, types of exempt signs, and maximum sign size. Proposed additions and revisions are within those parameters. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on August second, and the board unanimously recommended approval of the amendments. Additions are underlined and deletions are shown as struck through. And I have included the whole ordinance here for your reference, but we will not, we'll not be reading through the entire ordinance, just through the changes. So if you will flip to page two. After reviewing some other counties' sign ordinances, we changed the list of signs that were exempt from regulations. The first addition to exempt signs is home occupation signs. The addition says home occupation signs shall be limited to, limited to one per lot, not to exceed six square feet in size. The sign must be located at least one foot off of the right of way, and at least ten feet from adjacent property lines. Home occupation signs shall not be eliminated. Another addition to exempt signs.
Seth, before you leave that one, that one's not an addition. The same words were on page five. It's just a moving, moving the wording.
Right, exactly. It shifted around. It required a permit before, and now it does not require a sign permit. Thank you. Letter L is an addition. Agricultural signs related to produce, merchandise, farm services, or entertainment which is sold, produced, manufactured, or furnished on such farm, those signs are exempt. Agricultural signs must not exceed twenty square feet per face, nor exceed a maximum height of ten feet. Total signs allowed shall not exceed one hundred and twenty square feet. And that number isn't aligned with some of our other zoning districts. If you'll go on to page three.
Seth, excuse me, can, can you help me with this, making sure I understand? I underlined, it's in, uh, signs prohibited in all districts. Portable signs shall not be converted into a permanent structure or sign. You know, these portable signs are plastic facing and so forth? What you're, what, what are you really meaning there in that, in that sentence? Are you meaning you can't convert that sign into a permanent sign, or, or what?
That's pretty much what it's saying, you know, in a nutshell, but we have seen these signs that are not necessarily the step-in signs, but they're a, you know, like, say, a real estate sign, type sign, that do become permanent. Those are portable signs also, and those are not allowed to be permanent, so.
You mean like this lot for sale, that kind of thing?
Well, not, I said real estate sign, just that type of sign. There's lots of signs in the county that advertise business, but they're that real estate, real estate type, step in the ground sign that should not be permanent.
Yeah, cell phones or whatever.
Right, exactly. Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll go on to page three. We adjusted the definition for on-premise signs announcing fundraising, civic philanthropic, or nonprofit organization events. Those shall be limited to a maximum size of thirty-two square feet, and may be displayed for up to thirty days prior to the event, and removed within seven days following the event. Before the section of the ordinance didn't really say how big those signs could be. It was kind of wide open, and didn't really allow for how long those signs could stay there. We, we had signs that were staying there for months, so.
One more question about that.
Yes, sir.
There is a sign on the corner at Community One Bank.
Okay.
Is that sign grandfathered, you know, that announces community events?
Went in town?
Yes.
That, it's in the town of Taylorsville, zoning jurisdiction. I really don't know. It's been there a while, but, uh.
So this would not apply to that sign?
It would not, no, sir. Now, onto the next section, one fifty-four point one one four, prohibited sign locations. As you were saying, we've had a, a lot of problems with the step-in, plastic face signs, and we kind of removed those without any backing from the ordinance. It was kind of implied by the ordinance that those weren't allowed, and we can remove them, but decided to beef that up a little bit and actually add it to the ordinance by saying the zoning code enforcement officer shall possess the authority to, authority to remove and dispose of any sign located within any road right-of-way. Now, of course, right-of-ways are the DOT's jurisdiction, but they seem to be more reactive as opposed to proactive, so they may yank these signs up when they're doing mowing, but I've seen places where they just pretty much throw them on the side of the road, so this gives us the authority to actually remove those signs, um, with repeat.
If they don't, if you don't have a DOT permit, you can't put them there anyway, can you?
You're not supposed to, right.
And same thing with the utility pole. It's against state statutes to put signs on power poles, telephone poles, and so on.
I've had a real hard time getting DOT to enforce that. There's a, I can think of a couple there at Friendship Church Road and Highway sixteen. They're on poles there, and, you know, they kind of, anyway, I've had a hard time getting them to enforce those regulations, so.
But do we even have the authority to grant you the authority to pull those signs off the poles?
I'm not sure about the poles. The poles are owned either by energy companies or.
Or on the right-of-ways, because that, that is, that's a state right-of-way.
Right. I've based this on another county's ordinance. You know, I'm not sure if they've had any troubles or not with that. Actually, several other county's ordinances mention that, removing these illegal signs.
But before we move them ourselves, Duke Power, Southern Bell, AT&T, DOT should be called, because it's their right-of-ways, their property, and their responsibility.
And we have done that in the past with more permanent signs. They're pretty good. Like I said, they're pretty reactive. If you call them about a sign, I've had a couple of signs that they were pretty quick to remove, but portable signs are not real, not quite as quick to come out and take those down, so, because there's so many of them, honestly. I mean, if they were to tackle all the portable signs in the county, they would be pretty much an endless job.
Okay, go ahead, Seth.
Okay. Skipping on over to page five, that's just where we moved the home occupation sign to the exempt section, so keep on flipping over. The very last page, let me tell you a story. If you go, I'm sorry, if you go back to page five. We had had our original maximum size for wall signs was thirty, was thirty-two square feet. We had a few companies apply for signs that kind of balked at that number. It seemed to be rather low, and after looking at surrounding counties, that was pretty much the case. So we went with a maximum total of two hundred square feet in area. Also, it seems like a lot of these companies are going from the, the big signs at the road to putting these signs on the side of their buildings, just kind of going in with their, their new look and feel, I guess, or whatever, so this is kind of the new trend, to have bigger wall signs as opposed to huge pole signs, so we're trying to reflect that with this.
Let me, let me ask you about one in particular, to see if it falls under this criteria. If you go out to the intersection of sixteen ninety, there's a business that now sells cell phones, and they put a sign across the front of their building that, you know, advertises the name of their company. Does that fall with this, in this dimensions, because I know it's bigger than this.
Right.
I think you know what I'm talking about.
I do. Is that, well, I know the location.
Town limits.
It is in the town jurisdiction, but. Is it a banner sign, or is it a permanent wall sign, like a?
I saw them putting it up.
Okay.
It's a plastic.
Okay.
Sign that goes in front of that building, so if it's in the town limits, then forget the question.
It kind of, well, like this would be, you could only go up to ten percent of the wall surface, so, you know, you couldn't have this. I'm not, I'm not, I'm having a hard time. I guess I know what you're talking about, but not the exact sign, but anyway. So you couldn't have this humongous sign taking up three-quarters of the wall. It can only be ten percent of the wall size.
So if there's anything that, that's similar to that, that we find in the county, then we could call you and say it's there, and you could take care of it, right?
If it's in the county, more than likely it's grandfathered in, if it's, it's already been permitted.
No, I'm saying, if we see one appear.
Yes. Yes, you can contact me. So now we can move onward to the very last change, which is on page eight, which addresses off-premise directional signs. We've added letter H, which says a maximum number of three off-premise directional signs shall be allowed per use. You'll see businesses in the county that have multiple signs at every intersection that leads to the business, and this just kind of says, you can only, you really can't do that. You can only have three signs, off-premise signs pointing to your business.
Well, I thought you, uh, made that, uh, illegal in other parts here, under temporary signs.
It can be. It is addressed there, too.
So you really can't have all-premise directional signs?
It can't be in the right-of-way. It can't be in the DOT right-of-way. They can be on, they can have, they're supposed to have owner's permission to put these signs on owner's property, but it can't be in the DOT right-of-way.
Gotcha. Um, is that all?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay. I got a lot of red ink through here.
All right.
Um, and, you know, I got some problems with some of this, and some of it's just not the changes, it's just how the ordinance was written from before.
Okay. And that's why I include the whole ordinance, too, so we can look over it all. That's good.
Section one fifty-four point one eleven, signs exempt from regulation. Well, all these signs that you have listed as exempt from regulation have regulation attached to the exemption. So it really shouldn't read that, um, because these signs are actually not exempt. Right here's one. Agricultural signs related to produce, merchandise, farm services, or entertainment which is sold, produced, manufactured, or furnished on such farm. Agricultural signs must not exceed twenty square feet. That's a regulation. That's not exempt from regulation.
Fair enough. This, this is a, something that's consistently, consistently copied over from, you know, zoning regulations. I guess it's one of those inherent evils in zoning regulations.
And we've not went through this, so, you know, it's not, we've not went through this in the past recently. Um, so that should not read signs exempt from regulation. If, if a citizen were to read that, I, you know, is it exempt? Is it not exempt?
How about signs not requiring a permit, a sign permit?
That's, uh, sounds better.
More accurate, maybe.
And as far as temporary signs go, one fifty-four point one hundred and thirteen, political signs and posters when located entirely on private property. You're asking us to prohibit free speech, and one thing that is protected in this country is political speech. And if I want to put up a sign that says, I don't want to vote for so-and-so, or I do want to vote for so-and-so, I don't want anybody coming on my private property and taking my sign down.
And this isn't saying it's not allowed. It's just saying it has to be a certain size, and it has to be removed within fourteen days after the.
It has to be removed within fourteen days. If I want to put it up two years before the election, then that's my free speech right.
It says not to be argumentative, but to follow Ryan's point, to, the free speech, uh, argument. I don't think you can put any limitations on the size of it, because that's limiting to me. I'm not a constitutional attorney, but if it's on, on private property, you know, it could be the size of a school bus.
Right. And I can look into that and see what other counties have done.
If it's put on a school bus, it's not a sign, it's a moving vehicle.
I'm saying the size of the school bus. So just, just check on that.
Okay. I'll do that.
Um, also, on, on down below that, construction site signs, the building, you know, the sign may, may not be erected prior to the issuance of a building permit, and must be removed within thirty days of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. I'm sorry, seven days. And, you know, that, construction is struggling right now, and that's a way of advertising. Um, I really have a problem with limiting that to seven days. Uh, I think thirty is a reasonable amount of time for someone to leave a sign out. Does anyone disagree with that?
Just maybe. You're talking about signs like this, this house built by.
Yes.
Yes.
Or this, this roof done by so-and-so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Um. It's section one fifty-four point one fifteen, direct illumination. No flashing or source of illumination shall, shall be used on any sign, such as a spot or floodlights, and unshielded bulbs may shine directly onto adjacent properties or right-of-ways. Now, you go to one fifty-four point one sixteen, which is right below that, and it says all signs and signs supports shall be kept in good repair, including the replacement of burned-out bulbs for illumination. Well, just before that, you said that signs could not be illuminated.
It says you can't use spot, it can be illuminated. I mean, we have illuminated.
It says no flashing or source of illumination shall be used on any sign.
But read the whole thing. It says, basically, you can't have it shining on adjacent properties.
Well, I, I read it as unshielded bulbs may shine directly onto adjacent properties or right-of-ways.
Is this gonna affect Christmas? I mean, we can't have Christmas lights no more.
And back up to one fifty-four point one fourteen, I just, I don't know that we have the authority to grant you the authority to do that.
I'll look into that also.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It seems to me that there's going to be quite a bit of discussion about this amendment here, and this thing. Uh, I would tender a motion that we table this and have a work session instead of this open discussion.
I would agree.
I, I, I think that if we're going to have this much discussion, we probably should have already had a work session to discuss this. I think Seth did an outstanding job of trying to get this information together and present it to us. And so therefore, I, I, I move that we, uh, table this and, uh, put it into a work session, so that we can have an open discussion about it.
I second that motion. And Seth, I'm not giving you a hard time. This is our job, is to go through these ordinances and make sure that, you know, they're, you know, something that citizens of this county want and need.
Right. And again, that's why I include the whole thing, because I knew it was in dire need of update. Just, I appreciate you pointing out, and hopefully we can work to iron these wrinkles out of it.
And, and, and I wouldn't have a problem, you know, I mean, uh, that this thing could be, you know, Mike could put it in the newspaper and let people see it. If they have things they want to call and say about, they have the opportunity to do that, because it'll end up, before we pass it, if I'm not mistaken, it has to be a public hearing anyway, does it not?
Yes, sir.
So therefore, we could get this information out there, but we could use this at a, at a work session would be much better, I think.
But Seth, we appreciate your work on coming up with this template. It's, it's at least a, a good starting point.
All right, good. Any more discussion?
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passed, unanimously. Okay, Seth, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'm really, I'm, I wasn't trying to give you a hard time. It's just, I wanted to point out something. Thank you. Uh, let's see, where are we at? Item four on the agenda, public hearing, economic development incentive grant. Call on David Eisenhower, EDC Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this public hearing is related to an application by Composite Fabrics of America for an economic development grant based on a new investment of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand seventy-one dollars in new equipment. The company has also created two new jobs along with this investment in equipment. These jobs pay well over the county average. Based on that, it qualifies for a level-two grant according to the county's economic development incentive policy. The return will be ninety percent of the taxes on the new investment that we're talking about. Five percent of that is retained by the EDC, and of course, according to policy, the grant award percentage decreases ten percent each year, so starting at ninety, working its way down ten percent each year for a total of five years. Since this is a public hearing, following any questions from the board or the public, I will, of course, do my best to answer to those questions, and following that, I would ask that the board consider approving the grant application for Composite Fabrics of America.
David, is there a, uh, number of jobs attached to this?
Two, with this particular grant. Yes, sir. And those jobs have already been created by the company.
This is the, this is the manufacturing facility also that's in the old Blue Bell Building, if I'm not mistaken. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's an off-shooter. It was one of the businesses that came from Snyder Mills, and they did a spin-off or started, helped start the business there, and this, and this business, it's been very good. I mean, everything I've heard's been real good, and it seems to be, uh, growing slowly, but steadily, but steadfast.
Yes, sir.
So that's a very good thing.
They're making a pretty good investment of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, and, uh, we're not actually giving them anything. We're just not charging them full property taxes for the first five years.
Yeah, they actually paid the taxes, yes, but then it's reimbursed.
And the incentive policy goes back a number of years, because we recognized some time ago that jobs are created in Alexander County primarily by existing business and industry, and we wanted to make sure that we did as, at least as much for existing business and industry as we did for people who were not in this area looking, and, and the policy is, uh, applies uniformly that way.
And that's where the majority of, all jobs created anywhere are from existing businesses.
That's correct.
All right. Any more discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Uh, yeah, sorry. Is anybody in the audience who wishes to speak? This is a public hearing. Okay, there being none. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to close.
Got a motion? Is there a second? Have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passed unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the economic development incentive grant for Composite Fabrics of America.
Second motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. All right, item five on the agenda, public hearing, economic development incentive grant. Again, David Eisenhower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This grant, uh, this public, uh, public hearing is also related to an application for an economic development incentive grant. This one by Snyder Mills. The company has invested two-point-seven million dollars and has created three new jobs, which pay over the county average wage. Based on that investment and job creation, this application qualifies for a level-two grant, and again, beginning at ninety percent return on the investment for a five-year period, decreasing five, uh, ten percent each year. And it's exactly the same type of grant, Mr. Chairman, um, just the numbers are different. And Snyder Mills, I will say, um, at this point is up to three hundred and thirty-two employees.
How many?
Three hundred and thirty-two employees, and they've been doing very, very well, obviously, over the past several years. Four or five years have invested millions and millions of dollars in new equipment at their plant, and each time, um, they have applied for one of these grants, there is new job creation with it. So, again, uh, be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Excuse me, are they not the oldest existing industry in Alexander County at this time?
I would be hesitant to say absolutely that they are.
Me too, that's why I asked. I wasn't sure, but I know they have been steadfast as long as I can remember.
Larry, I, I would, uh, would, would agree with that. In my recollection, they probably are the, one of the oldest businesses in the county.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Of course, sixty-plus years, yes.
Right, very steadfast. Been very good to this county.
How many jobs did you say were created by this?
This particular grant, just three jobs. Yes, sir.
A lot of what, a lot of what they do is manufacture, um, material, if you will, for the military. They have been doing that for sixty years.
Custom fabric. And tell me if I'm wrong about this, but those, uh, some of those, um, wheels are spinning in there? The fabric wheels, a hundred miles an hour? Does that sound right?
I'm not sure about that, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure something in there's moving a hundred miles an hour, yes, sir.
The roll of the fabrics going on is what I meant.
Yeah.
Um, all right, is there a motion?
Public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm all out of sync now. Uh, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to comment on this one? Okay.
Move to close public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion?
No, go ahead.
All right, there being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passed unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the economic development incentive grant for Snyder Mills.
Second.
Well, you know, one, one of the things I would like to say here is I think it's imperative and, uh, that we do all that we can do to, 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 to support our existing industry. I think it's, uh, they've been a very valuable resource to the citizens of this county, and we need to continue to make sure that these folks have the tools that they need in order to continue to serve Alexander County and the citizens of Alexander County. And there's a lot of people that work for Snyder's that come from Alatea, and I, and I know that, but it has still been a tremendous asset. These industries that are here, the existing industries, do a tremendous amount to, to, uh, support Alexander County and the different, uh, areas of, uh, funding that they can do for our, uh, organizations and everything to take care of this county.
That's true.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah, it's not just jobs. They do support the community as well. We appreciate Snyder Mills. Um, any more discussion?
I, I have a comment to make. I think, uh, Mr. Yoder, I think, I think it was you that made the point. If it wasn't, uh, one of the commissioners that briefly said it's, it's important that we give these economic development incentive grants to existing industries. And that's a big philosophical difference I have with sometimes what the state does to attract new industry. And I'll use Dell Computer as a big example. Millions and millions and millions of dollars were spent to attract Dell Computer to, I think, the Greensboro area to create, quote-unquote, thousands of jobs. And Dell Computer is no longer in Greensboro, so that money was sunk into a losing endeavor. And so I think it's important that we are careful with the public treasure to help existing businesses is what, what we're doing. And we, we've said, and it has been said, that that's what we're doing here, and we need to continue to do that.
I agree. All right, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Okay, thank you, David. Uh, item six on the agenda, I Care Incorporated, Community Services Block Grant Funding for Alexander County. I call him Brian Duncan, I Care Incorporated's Executive Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Glad to, uh, glad to be here this, this evening. I am Brian Duncan. I'm Executive Director of I Care Incorporated over in Statesville, North Carolina. We provide, uh, low-income services to over a four-county area, actually. Um, most of our services are there in, um, Statesville. Services such as Head Start, um, this Community Services Block Grant that we're going to talk about very shortly, Weatherization, and, um, Workforce Investment Act funding. So from Lincoln County and now over to Alexander County, we have a, kind of a four-county footprint. Some time ago, I think it was December two thousand and ten, uh, the state of North Carolina made, uh, this funding available to existing community action agencies to apply for funding for Alexander County. And actually, there were about eight counties across the state of North Carolina that, uh, did not have this particular program. And we were one of the agencies, uh, that were contiguous to Alexander County that bid on this, uh, bid on this funding. Knowing that the, uh, the wheels of state government don't move always as quickly as we would like, we were notified very recently that we had been, uh, we were the agency that was chosen to. to administer this program here in the county. So, with that came, you know, just a myriad of things that we had to do, inclusive of what we're doing here tonight, just sharing our anti-poverty plan with the county commissioners. County commissioner's role in this is, is not one of approval, which is kind of odd. It's one to, to hear what our anti-poverty plan is and to, actually, you have a role in making a board appointment to our nonprofit board, which I see you have on the agenda later, so. Community block grant, Community Services Block Grant, funding is forty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-two, sixty-two dollars for this Alexander County area. CSBG services are responsive, kind of flexible services. They are not, however, entitlement services. We've worked very closely with Departments of Social Services to meet individual needs of individuals and families who fall below the federal poverty guidelines. I emailed you, each one of you, probably a couple of weeks, week and a half or so, what our anti-poverty plan is for this area, based on some surveys that we had sent out. One of the tenants of this program is that we get active participation from low-income residents in terms of how they think this program should be designed. We spend a lot of time kind of walking around, getting surveys out, send them out electronically as well. In our final analysis, what you have in front of you is what we came up with, basically. Some of the services that we'll be offering to suitable clients. And I want to, I want to stress suitable because one of the things, you know, I've met with Cindy Holman, and we met for an hour and a half, two hours, a couple of weeks ago, and we know that we'll be working very closely with DSS. But we want to make sure that we're good stewards of this money and that we are only working with families who are seriously interested in improving their current situation. Over the last, I guess, three years, we've been able to move about close to sixty families above the poverty guidelines in Aridale County. We certainly expect to be, to have the same success here. The funds are a lot less, obviously, it's based on our county size, but we certainly expect us to be equally as successful here. We'll be doing things in, in the realms of employment assistance, educational assistance, housing assistance, emergency assistance. We have a curriculum-based training program called Workplace Survival Skills and Financial Literacy Training that we'll be working with probably about fourteen families on over the course of the next year. It is recurring funding that usually, usually comes July one. Given our current situation, we have no idea what's going to happen next July one, but as of right now, we know that we've got forty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars to last until June thirtieth. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna do what we have to do. It's been a, it's been a very successful program, but I'll, but I'll be the first to admit, it's not, it's not an easy program. It's not easy to help people change their direction always. But we've got a pretty good staff. Our staff will be located at the Employment Security Commission, two half-days a week, and just out in the community, working with families, again, who are truly interested in, in changing their situations. I'm encouraged to see that you are, have approved incentive grants for local industries because we have learned that the best relationships are formed with those entities who kind of have a home base. We're able to go in there and deal with local human resource directors and say, what do you need? You know, how can we help you ensure that those who you are attempting to employ have the skills that they need? That's a lot different than working with, and I'll use your example, Dell, whose HR department may be across the world somewhere, and they don't really have a connection to the community. Those are some of the things that we do there in Aridale County, and I think that's helped us greatly just be successful. Average change in income over the last couple of years, eleven thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars for participants that were enrolled. So, it does not come without a lot of hard work. But again, we have the staff in place that is certainly on the ready to, to make it happen here in this county as well.
Is that the average household income?
No, it's not. That's the average change in annual income per participant. So, if it's just an individual, that may be his, his individual change.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Holman, if you don't mind, Mr. Duncan, what is the low-income definition? Because it seems to me like each time the state allocates money for a different group, the low-income definition changes.
Yeah, this is federal poverty guidelines, so one hundred percent of federal poverty guidelines, which is probably very similar to what DSS usually uses as well.
Now, you said you described four counties. I got Aridale, Lincoln, and Alexander.
Catawba.
Catawba, okay, I missed that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
But we do those in various capacities. We don't do this particular program. We only do this program in Aridale and Alexander now.
You mentioned earlier that you had met with Cindy Holman, the director at DSS. She has an excellent staff and they can give you valuable information. You were talking about surveys and so on, they probably have it on their desk or certainly in a file cabinet of people who, not just in the poverty level, but people who are involved in work first and so on, that would be people that could potentially be helped.
Absolutely.
She, she and her staff will give you some help because they, they're very interested in that.
Very accommodating. We look forward to working with Cindy and her staff. She had two other staff members in there that met with us as well. So, my fear is that once this goes back to the state, I don't know when they're going to respond to it. So, but at some time in the future, and we hope it's in the very near future, we'll be able to get the ball rolling on this.
Brian, what, in, in Aridale County, for example, what are the, you don't have to give me a list of ten or twenty, but what are the top keys to success to move people from where they are to where you want them to be?
Seriousness of effort is, is the first one, and that's so subjective. Because most people walk through the doors, at least proclaiming that they are serious about changing their current situation. I think the experience of staff helps to be able to detect that. But we do, we never immediately enroll anybody in a program because we're going to give them two or three appointments, because if they miss one, then they aren't serious to me. And, and so, that's, that's just one thing. Follow-through, are they attending the, the trainings that we have designed? And they design a, their own plan, basically. And staff just helps to guide them. But what is your plan for success? What is your plan to, to alleviate this poverty circumstance that, that you're in now? And what are your goals? I mean, is it that you truly want to go back to school? Do you want employment? Do you need employment training? Help, let's help sit down and design a plan. So, you know, we spent a lot of money probably on tuition, HRD-type courses at the community colleges that are not long-term, but that they can take in a reasonable amount of time and that can immediately turn into employment in the job market. So, I, I, you know, there's certainly not a silver bullet, but I, I think the, the seriousness definitely plays a role in it. Probably, and I've got my, one of my staff, actually, my program director here, you care to add anything, Sheldon, in terms?
I guess, just in, excuse me, Sheldon Moore, Program Director, CSBG.
Come on, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sheldon Moore, the Program Director. Just in addition to what Mr. Duncan has stated, I think attitude plays a significant role in their progress. Again, they come in with various barriers. We can provide all the assistance necessary, but it's very, very important that they have the right attitude.
And you, you folks can probably tell, based on the experience you've had, your radar detector, if you want to call it that, can tell when a person is really serious and when they're not, can you not?
I certainly think that there are some indicators that, that give us a clue as to how serious they are. And I mean, we've, we've been, I think, relatively successful in doing what we've done. We haven't batted a, you know, a thousand, but we've done pretty well with it.
Okay. And it's, you, you mentioned training people, it's more basic than that, a lot of times, developing, developing habits. I remember I worked first case years ago where an individual got upset because they didn't make it to work, their car broke down, they didn't call, the boss didn't know when they showed up the next day, the boss was upset with them. And they thought somebody ought to talk to that boss. They didn't understand the fact that they didn't show up and didn't let anybody know, made a hardship on him because he had to shift around and get their work done by people who were not planning on doing that work. So, it's a, it's more, I mean, it's, my hat's off.
Soft skill training, that's a large part of, of what we do and what is required. You know, typically, the, going to the community college and taking and completing the course is not the hardest part, you know? If they're committed enough to go, then, you know, they usually pass the course. But the soft skill training, just what you're talking about, realizing that, yes, I do need to pick up the phone and make that call to let them know that I won't be there, because those are, you know, habit-changing things. And so, we spend a lot of time on that, this Workplace Survival Skills Training that we do, it gets right into the meat of those things.
That doesn't seem like a lot of money. Is that for all four counties or?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, that's, that's just for.
That's just Alexander.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, that sounds better.
And it's not, it's not a lot of money. Actually, when we did the proposal, Mr. French will remember, it, it decreased almost ten thousand dollars since then, you know?
How, how many people are on your total staff and then how many people will be stationed here in Alexander County?
We've got about eighty-five total staff members spread across the four counties. We'll have two part-timers here, a couple, a couple of days a week.
Yeah, two days a week.
Two days a week.
And how long have you guys been in business? You know, I, I use business in quotations, so.
Nineteen sixty-four.
Okay, all right. Just, I mean, I don't recall having, you know, dealt with you before, so, you know, I just have some questions.
Absolutely.
And that change in income of eleven thousand five hundred dollars per year, that is a significant change to a person's life.
Yes, sir.
That's really good.
I, I was taken aback, just, I have to tell you this. I was in sales and sales management for close to thirty years with Bell South and we had a lot of sales training and soft skills. And when you said that, I was, you know, having flashbacks on, and Mr. Robertson brought up the fact that, that soft skills are, are as important as going to class and making your grades and just understanding, reading people's body language and, and things like that, those, those skills are almost as important as the learning skill.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The things we take for granted, right?
That's right, that's right.
I assume you teach people to balance a checkbook, that sort of thing.
Yeah, there is some financial literacy training that will take place. We will coordinate with one of your local banks, credit unions to come in and facilitate those trainings. Very, very important, especially if we're doing homeownership and then trying to transition them from substandard housing to standard housing. Many just, they don't understand, understand the significance of credit, credit scores and maintaining good credits, so, very, very important.
Okay, thank you.
I have to tell you a quick funny story. My daughter used to think when we'd pull up to the ATM machine, she didn't call it the ATM machine, she called it the free money machine.
Wish it was that easy. I guess what my son's saying.
If you, one more thing.
Go ahead.
If you would, since DSS will probably be your primary contact when you're working here in the county, make sure that Cindy's kept up to date with, you mentioned the funding in the state and how it drags out and so on. As long as we have an idea of what's going on, if we can do anything to help with that, which usually we don't, but at least if we're aware of it, we can try. Make sure she's aware of it and then we'll be aware of it and if we can help, we will.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah, we will certainly do that.
You were doing your presentation and you kind of got cut off there. Is there anything else that you need to relay to us?
No, that's it in a, you know, in a nutshell, I think, regarding the program.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions.
Well, we look forward to, you know, seeing what you guys do to help the citizens of this county. We appreciate everything that you're doing.
You guys will come back and, you gentlemen, excuse me, you gentlemen will come back and give an update and?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Absolutely. And then we'll have to, assuming that this funding will be available next year, we'll have to do the same thing.
Right.
And they've got it kind of on a, kind of a different time schedule right now. That typically will occur the first part of the year. So, we may be back as soon as like January.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll certainly do that at that time.
Very good.
You mentioned earlier that the state cut the funding about ten thousand dollars from the time you started looking at it earlier. How much has it been cut total from, say, three or four years ago? Do you know?
Nationwide, this funding probably went from seven hundred fifty million nationwide down to about six hundred and fifty million. That's, that's rough.
That's eighteen, fifteen, eighteen percent, something like that.
Yeah, and so, may, you know, we just don't know what's going to happen after the first of the year.
Just one follow-up question, not to get too far in the weeds. What, what's the allocation process? I mean, what, who, what determines how much money filters down from the big men in the sky to you folks?
It's based on poverty size and, I'm sorry, county size and the number of individuals in poverty in each county. And so, that's, that's why the, you know, you're talking about a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars for Aridale County with roughly a hundred fifty-five thousand people. Forty-eight thousand dollars here in Alexander County. I think the population here is roughly thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand people, so.
Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item seven on the agenda, Sales Tax Report, Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you have a copy of the final Sales Tax Report for fiscal year ending in two thousand and twelve. We budgeted three million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars in sales taxes last year. We collected three million five hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars in sales taxes or, which was a eight-point zero-four percent increase. Compare that to the previous year, we were about seven-point-three-nine percent higher. Last year, our numbers were three, three-point-five to three-point-twos in that range, same range. And under one of Larry's favorite things, the tax hold harmless set aside for school construction was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand and eighteen dollars. I'll be glad to answer any questions, but again, it's a positive sign that our sales tax is growing, but again, it's, you know, increased over the budgeted amount.
Right.
Eight percent.
We had budgeted three million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Yes.
It came in at three million five hundred and twenty thousand, which was two hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars over budget.
Right.
Now, looking at these final numbers and taking out the hold harmless of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, does that put us a hundred and thirty-two thousand, a hundred and thirty-three thousand to the good?
Yes.
All right, good.
Sales tax should be distributed per capita.
I've, I've heard that somewhere before.
I have too.
I wasn't going to say a word.
Okay, um, where are we at here? Number eight. Uh, item number eight, Proclamation Declaring September sixteenth, two thousand and twelve through September twenty-second, two thousand and twelve, as Hidnite Center Celebration of Arts Week. And I will go through and.
Mr. Chairman, before you read that, we have Karen Walker, who is the acting director of the Hidnite Center here tonight. And it may be an opportunity, before you read that, to ask Karen if she'd like to come up and say a few words about the Hidnite Center and the celebration. She's been sitting there very patiently and I know she's ready to talk.
Well, I did not know she was back there, so.
I thought we'd give her an opportunity to tell about this celebration, if you don't mind, sir.
Commissioner Yoder, you told me I wouldn't be speaking.
Well, I know, I told you that, but, you know, I would.
Always come prepared to give a speech.
I wanted to come tonight just express our appreciation for the proclamation and also for all your support throughout the year from the commissioners and the other, and the town also helps us out at the Hidnite Center with their support. But most of you probably know what Hidnite Celebration is, and that starts out on Sunday the sixteenth with a gospel singing that's open to everyone that like to come. That's an event that we. That's an event that we like to include. We brought it back after not having a gospel sing for a couple of years, but it was very successful this past year, and we're looking forward to another one. So, that's three o'clock, Sunday afternoon, September the 16th. Then on Tuesday, we celebrate our senior citizens, and we are having a Celtic music program along with lunch. And that's, especially for senior adults, we invite anyone else that wants to come also for that event. Thursday night, the 20th, we will have Orville Hicks. He's a well-known storyteller that is coming to do a family night, so we invite families to come out for a family-style meal and to hear Orville Hicks present some of the stories that he's famous for telling across North Carolina. We're celebrating North Carolina people in general as a theme of celebration, so that's one reason we wanted to bring him in also. Of course, on Celebration Day, Saturday, September 22nd, that's our big festival. Arts, crafts, music. The Folklife Tent is another focus because that focuses on the North Carolina heritage demonstrators who will be demonstrating those crafts and arts that have survived through the years thanks to our efforts in promoting those and preserving the history of North Carolina. So, we invite all of you to come. We've got a lot of special events, a lot of entertainment. And once again, I didn't mean to take much time, but I certainly wanted to be here to express our appreciation for the proclamation, so I'm anxious to hear what the proclamation is. Thank you.
All right.
Is there a website that an individual can go to to find, look at the agenda?
It's www.hidnitescenter.com. And we're on Facebook, too.
Absolutely.
All right, I'll read the agenda. Proclamation declaring Sunday, September 16th, 2012 through Saturday, September 22nd, 2012, Hidnite Center Celebration of the Arts Week. Whereas, for 31 consecutive years, the Hidnite Center has served as a beacon for art education, the preservation of folkways and heritage traditions, and a center for exhibitions and performances that make art and cultural accessible and affordable for the people of Alexandria County and the western North Carolina region. And whereas, the Hidnite Center's annual celebration of the arts will feature a week of events that include live performances in music, dance, and storytelling. And whereas, the 31st Annual Hidnite Center Celebration of the Arts Festival, held on the fourth Saturday of September, showcases a diverse group of regional artists and craft vendors, provides hands-on demonstrations of folkways and cultural arts traditions, features four performance stages for music and dance, and is attended by more than 10,000 people annually. And whereas, Alexandria County government is proud to support the arts in our community and wishes to commend the Hidnite Center's staff and board of directors for their continued dedication to excellence in service to the people of Alexandria and the surrounding counties. And whereas, the Hidnite Center and their annual celebration of the arts festival have had a tremendous impact in educating and inspiring generations of North Carolinians and are a treasure to Alexandria County. Be it therefore resolved, the Alexandria County Board of Commissioners declares Sunday, September 16th, 2012 through Saturday, September 22nd, 2012, Hidnite Center Celebration of the Arts Week, adopted September 10th, 2012.
Move to approve.
Second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd like to say is the Steely Drum Band will also be there that week, which is an outstanding group that performs very well from Appalachian State University. They're, it's always entertaining to see them. And she was talking about the gospel singing on Sunday. The gospel singing is outstanding, it's very good. The majority of the folks that are there are local people that have come to perform at the Hidnite Center. And it's just an outstanding day, and you can always get some real delicious fried apple pies. So, it's a great place to be on Saturday.
Anything else? All right. Got a motion in the second, discussion, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're going to move item nine down to 11A, so we'll go straight to item number 10. Board appointments and reappointments, Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Region E Development Corporation appoint Doug Cottle, three years. Reappoint David Eisenhower, three years. The I Care Board of Directors appoint Jerry Ratsford for three years.
Mr. Chairman, making motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item 11 on the agenda, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number five through number nine. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget amendment number five is to increase the county water and sewer fund budget for relocation of water line on Ben Eller Lane. Funding for the relocation is expected from NCDOT, $75,000. City of Hickory, $12,000, and county funds, $18,000. Budget amendment number six is to increase pre-trial release budget for yearly maintenance fee on pre-trial database system. The fee was not included in the original budget estimates for fiscal year 12, 13. To increase the Health Department budget for public health quality improvement funds and to increase the Health Department budget for purchase of ultrasound machine with grant funds from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, North Carolina Foundation. Budget amendment number seven is to increase the Sheriff's Department budget for purchase of a 1999 Dodge Ram truck with funds received in prior years from the unauthorized substance tax distributions. And number eight is to increase the jail budget for purchase of furniture for the new law enforcement and detention center. And then we have a project ordinance for Alexandria County 2011 Scattered Site Housing Program, CDBG Project Number 11C-2302, which totals $400,000. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you have about any of those amendments, Mr. Chairman, or any board members.
Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
The sheriff, I guess it'd be account number 1051005-55520 is the purchase of the vehicle. The 1999 Dodge Ram truck.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions about that.
Okay.
I'd like to ask you, the county has a purchasing policy, does it not?
Yes, sir.
And that purchasing policy requires prior approval to purchase of equipment, such as a pickup truck?
Yes, sir, it does.
Was that adhered to in this particular case?
No, sir, it was not.
And also, we prefer to keep tax sales revenue money in this county. That truck was not purchased in this county, was it not?
No, sir, the truck was purchased in Martinsville, Virginia, from Nelson Honda.
And a question, and I don't know if it bears mentioning here, but if a vehicle is purchased out of state without a purchase order, there is no insurance on that vehicle when it's transported to the county, is that correct?
That's correct, unless they called and made arrangements for insurance.
Was that done in this case?
I'm not sure.
The reason I'd like to, maybe if you could find an answer to that, because if an accident would happen and that vehicle was being transported and driven from the place of purchase out of state to this county, the county would be liable if an accident occurred, would it not?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to emphasize that we need to make sure that, whether it's the Sheriff's Department or whatever department it is, that purchasing policy is followed in all instances. And I would maybe like from you a recommendation as to how we could make sure that's done in the future.
Well, in the future, if you have any of these situations, it might be a good idea for the department head to meet with the Finance Committee and discuss the reasons and review the information with them. That's what I would suggest.
And also, maybe a refresher to all departments as to what the correct procedures are?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see that we, I would like to recommend that we do that. Because I would certainly hate, in this case, if an accident happened, and God forbid that it did, the county could be under severe liability if an accident happened. So, if you could just refresh all departments about what, in the form of a memo, would probably be sufficient on what the correct purchasing procedures are. If you have any other ideas about how to reemphasize that, that would be something.
We'll also discuss that at a department head meeting, too.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with what Merkey's saying, and I would suggest maybe that send it out by email to all department heads and have them sign off on it, or acknowledge, or acknowledge receipt so that you've got a record, they understood it once upon a time, anyway. But we'll let you handle that.
Okay, yes, sir.
Can these state drug funds be spent out of state?
Yes, sir.
In my comments, Mr. Chairman, was just to say that we should purchase locally if we have the opportunity. Keep that tax money in the county.
Mr. Chairman, making motion to approve.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion in the second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item 11A on the agenda, which was formerly item number nine. We had to pass the Budget Ordinance Amendment before we could look at this. Call on Rick French, county manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have a copy of the furniture quotes for the Alexandria County Law Enforcement and Detention Center. We have six quotes included in your packet. The low quote for furniture is from Office Furniture USA. Their total is $61,045, $61,045. That, we have to add back the lowest quote for desk, for the patrol room, which is room 152, which will take the total low price to $69,295, $69,295. We had other quotes, but they were the low bidder. The $8,250 for the patrol room is from DOC Enterprise. In your budget amendments, you approved $78,000. The other money beyond this is for shelving, storage items, things like that. So, I just want to mention that to you.
So, you're recommending that we approve Office Furniture USA for the main portion?
Yes, sir.
And then the DOC Enterprise bid for room 152?
That's correct. I would like to add that, as several of you noted, that all the furniture was made in either Kentucky or in the state of New York, which means it was all made in the United States.
You would not get any bids from any businesses in North Carolina that manufacture office equipment?
We've got these. That's all we've got.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the purchase from Office Furniture USA, $61,045, adding to that the purchase through Department of Corrections, $8,250 for the $69,295.
I'll second.
Got a motion in the second, is there any discussion? I do have something I'd like to ask. How was the bidding process done on this?
We solicited information from firms and asked them to provide us quotes on the furniture. It falls within the purchasing policy, we followed it.
Office Furniture USA, that's based in Hickory, is that correct?
Yes.
Or at least the local business is getting that business. Got a motion in the second, any more discussion?
How close are we to being finished with the agenda?
I was going to give that update in just a couple of minutes.
Oh, okay, excuse me, I apologize.
It's okay.
Inproper. Go ahead.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave it, I didn't want to interfere with the thought process of the money, but I would like to know if we could get some information from the Department of Corrections, since as a taxpayer, I pay the cost or help pay the cost for their employees to eat and live. I'm curious as to why they're one of the higher bidders we've got on this. It's not like they're paying their power bill and their insurance and health insurance and all that stuff. If we get an answer on that, I would appreciate it.
All right, item number 12 on the agenda, county manager's report, Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of updates. One, to Commissioner Yoder's question or comment. As of September the first, we had spent $6,271,357 on the law enforcement and detention center project. Projecting total construction cost, and we're hoping that we'll be wrapping up in October, November, moving in in December. We're looking at about $8,268,677. That does not include some of the operational costs items that we've been talking about, like we just approved, like on the furniture. But that gives you a financial update. We're looking at moving in in December. One thing I'd ask you in the manager's report is to be thinking about a date for dedication, so maybe need to set that at our next meeting. Also, in discussion earlier about the Hidnite Festival on September 22nd, would also like to point out that at eight o'clock that morning, we're having the Hidnite Festival Trail Race at Rocky Face Park. And at one o'clock, we're having a dedication for Rocky Face Park. And so, that'll make a nice day of celebration all the way around with the Hidnite Festival and the park dedication and run. And also, just want to mention our first meeting in October, it happens to be on October the first. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about my report, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? No questions? All right, we'll go on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. We do need to have a closed session, per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11. To prevent the disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel, we will come back into open session solely for the purpose of adjournment. Make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion?
Not on adjournment.
I know, I forget that every time. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.